Okay, I'd like to welcome you here this evening. This is our Women's Club Candidates Forum for School Board. And we're so glad that you took this time out of your busy schedules, and I know how busy they are at this time of year, to come and join us. I will introduce each of our candidates, lovely ladies. I'm surprised we're not at a beauty contest here. They're beautiful ladies. So at least the school board's gonna look good, no matter who wins. I'm going to introduce each of them, then each of them will have two minutes to talk about themselves, and then we will move into the questions. And during the period of questions and presentation answers, feel free, if a question pops up, just step back to the rear table there, fill out your question card, they'll deliver it to the ladies here, and the ladies will deliver it to me, and we will rotate as we go through our candidates. So any questions? All right, very good. So tonight, I'm going to introduce all of them, and we'll go back, and each one will get to present. This is Paulette Caudell, down on the end there. And next to her is Tracy Miller-Zarnike. And then next to her is Emily Lane. And then this is Amy Grant. So Paulette, would you like to take your two minutes?
Oh, right now, first me?
Okay, dokey. That's gonna snuck up on me already.
Sure. I didn't pick the placement. Don't blame me.
Oh, okay. Good evening. I want to thank the Women's Club for holding this forum, and I especially want to thank all of you for coming out to hear our views. My name is Paulette Caudell, and I'm a retired teacher of 34 years. Experienced 20 of those years were at El Segundo High School. I'm passionate about education, and I appreciate the opportunity to run for school board. I taught every grade K-12 and beyond. I'm here to tell you that kindergarten teachers are saints. I only lasted a half a day. Also during that time, I taught both regular and special education. I even taught a couple courses at the university and a parenting class at adult school. I have master's degrees in both special education and school administration. I would be an invaluable resource on our board. I am 44-year resident, and my son graduated from El Segundo High School. As a parent, I served on PTA, becoming council vice president, and was honored with the Very Special Persons Award. Also, I was active in Little League and Boy Scouts. Currently, I serve as president of the Road Committee, Reach Out Against Drugs. I have been a member of that organization since its inception in 1988. Other leadership roles I have held were history department chair, co-chair of the high school leadership team, mentor teacher, and seven years as president of the El Segundo Teachers' Association. I have intimate knowledge of the negotiations process, budgeting, school rules and regulations, and much more. I feel I am infinitely qualified to serve on your Board of Education. Should I go on?
Thank you, Paulette. I didn't see that. And next, we have Tracy.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tracy Miller-Zarnike. I'm a 21-year resident of El Segundo. I'm happily married with two sons. One is in ninth grade at the high school, and one is in sixth grade at the middle school. My husband and I moved here long ago, not just to be near the beach, but also because we knew that someday we'd have a family, and we'd want to raise our children in a nice community with great public schools. And happily, that's the life we are living today. As soon as my oldest entered kindergarten in Ms. Portillo's class at Center Street School nearly a decade ago, I felt an amazing connection to the school community and got deeply involved right away. At that point, I jumped in to teach the Character Counts program, and also to work with the newly formed Grades Agreed program, teaching our children how to take care of our planet. I went on to chair both of those committees for multiple years at my time, sorry, during my time at Center Street. I also served on the school site council and was its president for four years. I was a PTA member for all nine years I was in Center Street, and I served as the PTA president in my final year. I'm currently in my second year of chairing the Parents on Campus program at the middle school, and also serving as parliamentarian for the ES, El Segundo PTA Council. Outside of the school system, I've been a member of the city's environmental committee for over four years, and I'm currently serving as the chair of that as well. While working in these volunteer roles, I have met fabulous parents, and I'm glad to call them now my friends. I've met wonderful staff and teachers that I grew to respect for their great appreciation, or with great appreciation, for their tremendous commitment to our children. I have worked alongside them, and everyone, from the custodian to the superintendent, for almost 10 years, and I've enjoyed developing positive relationships with them all. I'm running for school board now because I feel I want to channel my experience, my relationships, and my passion into making fair, informed, and thoughtful decisions to maintain or even raise the high standards of our school district. I want it to be the best it can be until way beyond when my boys fly out of here as graduated eagles. I appreciate your consideration and casting a vote my way.
Thank you, Tracy, and now we'll hear from Emily.
Good evening, everyone. I didn't know we were going over years of El Segundo. I grew up in El Segundo. I was not born and raised here. I went to college and met my husband, and when I found out he was from Southern California, that was half the dating battle. I knew he could take me back home. But when he was in construction management at school, and it was understood that if we got married, we'd be moving to this town called El Segundo to take over the family business. We currently own CC Lane &amp; Sons. We bought it from his dad a year ago, which has been in town for 60 years. That's why I know a lot of you know Grandma Nadine and Connell and all those, and I'm related to Westovers and Randalls, and yes, that is us. You know, we moved here in 2001. We lived here for a couple years before the family. We had two kids by then, and we couldn't afford a house, so we moved to the Wiseburn District. But we permitted back to El Segundo, but I wanted to be close enough that if we couldn't permit in for some reason, Wiseburn had a good K-8 program at the time. But then luckily, five years, six, seven years ago, we were able to move back into town. A friend was retiring and moving out and offered his house, and that was a no-brainer. We had a nice five-bedroom, three-bath house in Del Air, and then we moved over here to a two-bedroom, one-bath house, and that was the best decision we made. My kids might not think so sometimes. But I am proud to be a member. I've been on the school board for five years now, president this last year, and there's a lot to do. And schools don't happen by chance. It's been a pleasure serving. I hope to continue serving and finishing up some, you know, big things that we have going on in the district.
Thank you, Emily, and now we'll hear from Amy.
Hi, thank you. Thank you to the Women's Group for hosting this tonight. I am brand-new to El Segundo. Brand, brand-new. I moved here in May. I moved here from mid-city Los Angeles, but I am originally from New York, a little town called West Hempstead, New York, and it's actually quite similar to this town, which is what drew me to this town. My mom served on the school board in West Hempstead for almost 30 years, so I'm pretty well-versed in what it takes to be a board member. She was also a teacher for almost 38 years in the same school district of Garden City, and I learned what it takes to be an educator through her. She passed away in February of this year, and I hope to carry on her legacy, which is what made me want to run and serve this community, which has given us so much in such a short time. I have two sons. One is just about to turn six. He's at Richmond Street School, and I have to say, that school has blown me away in a very short time. The teachers are amazing, and I can't help but be beside myself to want to contribute back to the community, which is why I'm here. My other son is just about to turn three. He's a little bit of a handful. We'll see how he does in the school system, but for right now, here I am, and I'm looking forward to serving the community.
Very good. Thank you, Amy. And now, we have our first question. Our first question, we're gonna start out with Paulette. My good friend, Paulette, okay. And now, everyone is going to get one minute to answer this question. So, "Reading the most recent South Bay school scores, El Segundo Elementary Schools were lower than the other South Bay schools. What will you do to ensure more students score at an above-grade level in math and English?"
You need to look at those scores and evaluate, analyze the data to see what they tell you. Why, I mean, in what areas were they low? And then, you need to sit down with your teachers. The teachers all sit down, and they talk about how, where our weaknesses are, where our strengths are, and how can we plug the holes or bolster our program. You do a complete evaluation. And then, that's a process, because you have new tests, and scores always drop when there's a new test. And it takes about three years to get those scores back up to where they were before the new test came in. That's research. How much time we got?
Thank you. All right.
Those are just elementary schools, right, you were talking about, or was it all?
This one is, "El Segundo Elementary Schools Were Lower."
Okay. I think it's something that each site has to look at individually. If you've had a change in staff, if you've had a change in the demographics of the school, all that can obviously affect testing from year to year. We've been ramping up readers workshop, writers workshop, things like that. We've been adjusting differentiation in math. There's all kinds of constant adjustment. I mean, it's a continuous learning experience for both the teachers and the students. You see what's working and what isn't, you kind of readjust the ship. You start, you know, adjust the course accordingly. So I know, working closely with the teachers in the elementary school, that they look at each student individually and try to help support them as best they can to what their needs are. And that's never gonna change. That's definitely something we do well here in El Segundo. And in my opinion, test scores, such as the state test scores, are just a snapshot of what education your child is getting, and they're more than just numbers on a page. But because we all look at those numbers, we certainly need to use them as a benchmark to adjust the course and work with what the students need to do better in each time.
Thank you. Thank you, Tracy. Okay, Emily?
You know, the first thing I learned from a wise, wise school board member that might happen to be in the room, is the board's role is not to get in the weeds. You know, it is very important that the board sets a policy and then makes the necessary financial decisions often to allow the teachers to do their jobs. You know, the last couple years with Common Core and Science Standards and all things changing, we were really putting a lot on our teachers. And we've made a, on a district level, we've made a very important decision of achievement teams. Allowing time for teachers to crunch data is very important, because until they can digest what's going on, they can't make those necessary changes. And I know our teachers are willing. We have amazing staff here, and when they take the time to look, I firmly believe things will change. You know, our high school has scored the top scores in the South Bay. I don't think that is because the middle, or elementary schools aren't underachieving. They are overachieving, and it's showing at the high school.
Thank you, Emily. Okay, Amy?
I think we get too hung up on what scores are. I think what we have to do is take a look at the whole child. I think you need to take a step back, and you need to look at three things. One, what the teacher is doing in the class. Two, what the child is doing. And then, three, what the parent is doing. I think that children cannot score adequately on tests if there isn't parent involvement. I've been pretty interested in looking at the RAS program that my kid, my kid, TJ, Tyler, has been doing, and I've noticed that in the class of 24 children, only about three are reading the books on a consistent basis. Now, that is on the parent. So it is on the parent and the teacher to work together with the child to get those grades up.
Very good. Thank you. All righty, thank you. This question, we're gonna start with Tracy. "What is the best program that the Ed Foundation funds, and how do you feel about the Ed Foundation?"
Well, the Ed Foundation is a very important part of our district. Because we are a district that has a low percentage of subgroup population, we don't get a lot of state funding. So our Ed Foundation is extremely important in this town to help fill that gap. We've happily been supporting it for every year that we've been here, and I look at that as key to enjoying the high-quality education we do here. The best program they support? I don't know. I think each campus has the things it needs because of the Ed Foundation. I know at the elementary level, parents are thrilled that we have an amazing music teacher and STEM, STEAM teacher and PE teacher, and we have art in our schools, amazing stuff like that, that, you know, if the state had it their way, we'd have none of that. So at the elementary level, I'd say that. At the middle school level, I would say absolutely the IB program. That adds so much more to our students' education than just the facts and figures that they could be sitting around memorizing. It gives them critical thinking skills. Ooh, and I am done. All right then.
Thank you, Tracy. Emily?
You know, this is an interesting question, and I appreciate Ed, in the last couple years, has kind of shifted their focus to where they don't fund programs, they fund our district. And it's so important that we, as a community, kind of get away from that, because what they fund really comes from our teachers. We have a budget session, and we talk about what is needed, and then how Ed can fill in those gaps. I never want Ed to get stuck as funding something good or something bad, because what they do is imperative to our schools, and we need those funds. So, you know, I could do a whole list of the web where everyone belongs at the middle school, to PE teachers, to Link Crew at the high school, to the IB, but I really think everything that they do is important, and I really try to stay away from pinpointing that way.
Thank you, Emily. Amy?
So again, as I'm so new, I don't have a particular program that I can say that I think the Ed Foundation supports that I'm most excited about. However, I will say that I have heard through the grapevine that it funds a lot of the arts in the school, which I'm a huge advocate of the arts. I am a former actress. I was an art and acting teacher for a long time. So of course, anything that funnels, any kind of funding toward the arts is something that would make me very happy. Also, I was asked why I don't have any yard signs. I chose not to buy any yard signs. I took all of the money that I would have donated to yard signs and donated to the Ed Foundation. So I'm a firm supporter of the Ed Foundation and what I have seen it doing.
Very good. Thank you. And Paulette, please.
We wouldn't have all the wonderful things we have in our district without the Ed Foundation. They've been supporting our schools for years and years and years, and it's amazing. Every year, they seem to have, are able to reach their goal of making more money, and we get more benefits from that. We've heard STEM, STEAM, music programs, and arts programs. We could go on and on. But without the Ed Foundation, we wouldn't have the exceptional education that we have. It's tremendous for our children, and we can live without it.
Thank you. Next question. All right, this question, we're gonna start with Amy. Okay. "We will have an all-female board with a female superintendent. Do you anticipate any issues with the lack of the gender diversity on the board?"
No.
There you go.
No. I don't, no. I mean, that's my answer. It's pretty simple. Not to offend any of the men in the room, but women get things done, and not that men can't, but it seems from what I see on this panel right here, these are all women that are doers and go-getters, and I think that women also, especially in the climate of today, need to figure out how to work together and move forward and move in a positive direction. So no, I don't foresee any issues.
Very good. Thank you. Paulette?
That was a good answer. I like that. Hmm. You know, it's not like there's not gonna be any men anywhere. A lot of men in administration. I don't see a problem. And like she said, we're all dynamic. We have plenty of experience, and we don't, and we still get counseling from the staff at the district. I don't think this is gonna be a problem. I'm not going there.
Very good. Tracy?
Yeah, I concur. It's not gonna be a problem. I have to say, I'm a person that believes that it's a matter of experience, not gender. So that's not really an issue for me. I mean, I wish all job applications did not have gender, or even age, or race, or any of that on it. You just look at the qualifications of a candidate to understand if they are appropriate for a job. So men, women, or either-or, I could do with whoever the best candidate is in any situation. So we'll be fine.
Very good. Thank you. Amy? I mean, Emily?
You know, this is a funny question, 'cause I've thought about this. I honestly have. I will deeply miss Bill, and I will deeply miss Jim. They brought a very unique perspective, and that will be missed. You know, our board has been very functional for the last five years, and I appreciate that more than anything. I think sometimes people think, oh, they don't even disagree. We do disagree. In closed sessions, we disagree, but then we come to what we believe, and we come out there united. That is very important. Now, I can tell you there are times at home when I need my husband's opinion. That different take is valuable. So I do think, yeah, it would have been great, but I didn't see any guys putting their name on it. So that's their own fault. And so I am thankful for all these women. I think all are qualified in it for the right reasons. So no, I don't think it's gonna be a problem. But sure, I, you know, I think, I hope next time, some guys will come and help.
Thank you. All right. Okay, Paulette, are you ready?
I wasn't.
You've all had their chance to start.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. "Please discuss how El Segundo Unified School District will provide safety in all our, on all our campuses. Is there a plan in place to provide security?"
There is a plan in place, and it's called a Long Range Facilities Plan. And they have, hmm, it's very exciting. Like I said, there was a new administration building that it's patterned after the architecture of the high school. It would be an absolute asset to our community. With the middle school gets, oh, this is safety. All right, we go back. Fences. There are fences around all the schools, and I was concerned about that because I thought, oh my God, we're gonna look like prisons. But they're very nice ornamental fencing, and we won't look like a prison. It won't feel like a prison. There are going to be portals. Each school has one access entryway and exit, and it'll be very nice. I've seen the architectural drawings, and they're very nice. So you're not gonna know that we have these security measures? That's pretty much, oh, and then we also get some more security staff at the middle school and the high school. Done. I am.
But not done in. Tracy?
Yes. Safety is an important issue to me, because we at Center Street last year had a student very nervous about stranger danger on campus, and our administration jumped right in right away and found out it wasn't actually an issue to be concerned about, but we're glad our students were aware. The minute that we raised the flag of concern, I was very pleased that Dr. Moore was instantly ready to have a meeting and sit down and talk about it, and what can we do to make our students feel safe right now? And I appreciate that the district brought in a security consultant to look at every campus right away and evaluate what we could do right now, regardless of the bond measure, right now. And I appreciate the fencing that's going in, the portal system that Paulette mentioned, the security help that we now have on both the middle school and high school, who also cover a bit of elementary school as well. I feel that, you know, nothing is foolproof, but I'm glad that we are responding to concerns that have been recently triggered in our community, and we're addressing that, and we'll continue to evaluate and adjust as needed.
Very good. Thank you. Emily?
I'd like to ask for more time. Just kidding. This is an important issue. It's very important, and the board has heard the community, but you know, I, and this is Emily Lane speaking, I firmly believe that we can surround our schools with fences, but a lot of, if you look at the recent events, it was students inside the schools. So the emotional, social learning of these kids, I think, needs to really be put on the forefront. What these kids are up against nowadays with technology and social media in their face, and it's rough, and that needs to be looked at. But with that, the board did have Actus Consulting come in. We have a whole plan to go, to make some recommendations, and we have started putting some of the imperial money, and that's what you see happening. That's imperial money, the sale of imperial money to use on, based on that plan. You know, I just wanted to kind of, Paulette keeps talking about administration building. I want to make sure people understand that the administration building is because Arena High School is growing, and they need us to get out of the way, and not that we just want a new administration. There is a whole plan with that.
Thank you. Emily, Amy?
Should the bond pass, I saw that there was a lot of focus on the entrance portals to each school, which I think is one of the most important things. Coming from LA Unified and from schools that were using fingerprint systems, also signing in, signing out, very, very secure school systems, I was surprised by how lax the security is at Richmond. I was shocked that there wasn't a fence around center, more so because I was thinking about my three-year-old leaving the school rather than anyone going in. But that being said, security is very important, and we'd be silly not to take that and make it a paramount issue. It is small towns like this one where issues tend to happen when you don't think it will. So it is in our best interest to make entrance points secure and few.
Thank you, Amy. And now, we're going to start with Tracy. "Do you have a list of school projects prioritized?"
A list of school projects? I have to say, I don't truly disagree with anything the district has been prioritizing in the last nine years that I've been here and paying attention with it. I personally would like to definitely see more of the social-emotional support for our students, but also have that extend to our parents, so our parents understand how to support kids in today's world, because it is more complicated and scary and stressful than anything we had to deal with growing up. So I think we all, as the village, should be on the same page with how we support our students in that way. As I mentioned before, I'm part of the Environmental Committee for our city, and I would say I would definitely look into how our schools can be more thoughtful with our processes and be more eco-friendly in some ways. There are ways we can do it and save money at the same time. So I look forward to bringing that into the system as well.
Very good. Emily?
Well, not to beat a dead horse, but there's this thing called a Long Range Facilities Master Plan that is near and dear to my heart. I, we met with teachers, we met with parents, we met with everyone that we could get to talk to us. And some, and again, it's a need. I know it's a scary number, but if you open those pages and see the amount of things that we're looking at, it's so important to me, and that is one of the major reasons I wanted to rerun. I wanted to see this through. I wanted to ensure that the projects happened. You know, IT fiber, you don't think about. There's, to hold the bandwidth that the kids need. We talk about all this STEAM and STEM and all this, but our classrooms aren't built for that. We need to make some changes. Our middle school is the only middle school in the whole South Bay without a gym, and we call, it's gonna be a multipurpose room for us. They cannot meet as a whole school. They don't fit anywhere. Things like that will help bring kids together. It'll be a place. You know, we've got some portables at Richmond that need to come down. It's important. So that is my top priority.
Thank you, Emily. Amy?
I come with no agenda. I come as an open vessel. I am too new here to really impose any of my personal viewpoints on anything. However, that being said, I, as I mentioned, am a huge arts proponent. I would love to bring more arts into the school, whether it be visual, music, acting, any of the arts. Also, something that was percolating in my mind is somehow setting up a program with children and matching them with seniors in the community. Not sure how that would work, but it's something that's percolating, because if we can... Not sure how that would work, but it's something that's percolating, because if we can bridge that generational gap, that's a huge thing. And then, one other thing is focusing on working families. You know, I have been a working mom, and this is the first time that I've had the chance to stay at home with my family, and I'd like to work for working families in this town.
Very good. Thank you. Paulette?
Um, what?
She's got to take a call. Sorry. Just kidding. Paulette?
Okay. My list of priorities is a little different. I am very concerned about social, emotional, learning components, and wellness. So, I'm sorry. Let me pull it together. I would be focusing on the counseling and the mental health services. I see that as K through 12, not just high school, that we need to offer a service to help children who are struggling in school. We need to be the safety net that presents itself before they have serious problems. And I would do this K through 12. And it's interesting that this is already starting. This is a dream I've had for a while, and it's already starting. We have a new counselor at the elementary school. There's a new program that's coming in called Miracle Mile, which I was able to be a part of.
Very good. Linda? We need more questions. Come on, bring it. Come on, you're now inspired by hearing some of the answers. Please, step on back. We want to, we want to make sure our lady's here. Take a deep breath. Anybody needing a card, raise your hand. Linda will bring it to you.
Oh, come on, Julie, you've got something.
This is your opportunity to make these ladies work.
They know everything they need to know.
Yeah, everything's out there.
Great.
Did you have a question there? Okay, good. Okay, get ready, ladies. Here it comes. And I think we're starting with Emily this time, right? All righty. Somebody has to moderate the moderator. Do you have?
Hannah.
It comes over here.
We have questions for ourselves. We asked the wrong questions.
Talking about like the WU talk, middle of the show, right?
No, oh, gosh.
Do you have a question?
There you go. We'll take your questions.
I have a question.
It's called stump the panel. Stump the panel. Okay.
I have one.
Very good.
Do I have one? Did you get a question?
No, I'm reading one.
So, you got one?
Yeah, we have one.
Do you have a question?
We have a question. We're trying to stump the panel. You ladies are doing a stellar job, so.
We answered everything.
Yes. Okey-dokey. Here we go. And this is starting with Ms. Emily. How do you feel about permit students, and should the number of students be increased or decreased?
Well, I think I started in my intro saying that we were permit students for 10 years. So, it's valuable. I, my children wouldn't be where they were without it. With that said, you could ask any of the cabinet administration, and I am first to say, they need to be held to the same standard, if not a higher standard. And I have no problem enforcing those standards higher and taking action that way. But what this community needs to understand is, the education that we need to provide for our kids can't come with the ADA that our base has. We want STEM, we want art, we want PE, we want things. We need to fill seats. That doesn't mean opening new seats, open new classrooms to bring in permit students, but if a teacher is needed, based, having that seat, that classroom maximized allows us to have the funds to do the curriculum and courses and things that we feel is just normal here. And that is because of those funds. So, it's a balance, but definitely needed.
Thank you, Emily. Amy?
I agree with what Emily is saying. It's my understanding that enrollment is down, and without permitted students, we will not get the funding that we have currently. And so, I am 100% for permitted students. Also, in agreement that there has to be a certain standard that is met, and if that standard is not met, then that can, that student cannot be allowed to stay in the district. So, it's pretty simple to me.
Very good. Paulette?
Okay. I was teaching here when we had 600 students in the high school. And, yeah. And that was why, one of the big pushes for permit students. And there was an outcry at that time, but I didn't see any of that outcry manifest itself, like we would get bad kids. We cherry picked all the other districts and got their A and B students. Their behavior had to be exemplary. I had more trouble with our students than I ever had with a permit kid, because if you don't behave, if you don't toe the mark, you're gone. And the investment was incredible. So, I think, and today, there isn't any groundswell of anger about permit students, and we have, oh, and given that, we were able to be more diverse, which increased our academic standing, and also brought us money, and more, different kind of money for special needs kids.
Very good. Thank you.
So, it's necessary. It's very necessary.
Thank you, Paulette. Tracy?
Yes. I have to say that the permit kids that I know are some of the hardest-working kids in our schools. And yeah, I agree. The kids that are here and are allowed to be here because they live here, sometimes could slack off a little bit, but we are keeping them all. So, I have to say, they are, the permit kids are held to higher standards, they do bring in more income, but we are very respectful of the teacher-student ratio here, and we won't push it to the point where we're shoving people in classrooms where there is not space or seating or any of that. We're very thoughtful about respecting the ratios per grade level here, and that will not change. So, we'll happily have the permit students come, as space allows, and keep them to those higher standards.
Thank you, Tracy. Emily?
That was mine, but I'll do another.
You want to do it again? You wanted more time.
I'm ready.
Okay, here we go. Starting with Amy. What do you see as the most important role of the school board member? And part B is, what qualities do you bring to fill those roles?
In my opinion, it is a board member's responsibility to be the liaison for the community. It is not what I want to happen in the community. It's not what I want done. I am a sounding board for the community. I am the sounding board for the parents, and then I bring that back to the superintendent. And we work together as a board with the superintendent to come to the best solution for those issues. I saw my mother time and time again just be bombarded in the grocery store, in, you know, in the doctor's office, anywhere she was. My child needs this, my child needs that, I need this done, can you do this? I personally cannot do it. But as a group, we can work together with Dr. Moore. That being said, what I bring to the table, I think, is a wealth of different experiences. I have been a substitute teacher. I have run an acting school. I have been an actress. I've worked in corporate offices. I've worked in small mom and pop offices. I have a wealth of different experiences, and I can be very diplomatic, and yeah, my time is done. So, there you go. If you have more questions, ask me later.
There you go. Thank you, Amy. Paulette?
Could you do me a favor and read that question again?
Yes, ma'am. What do you see as the most important role of a school board member? And what qualities do you bring to fill that role?
I think the quality, the most important, would be the ability to listen, and to hear, and to take in the concerns of the community. And we have to listen to all of our stakeholders. Parents, the entire, the city council, students. We need to be able to listen to all of them and represent them when it comes time, at the board meetings. And we need to work with the superintendent to iron out any difficulties or issues that may arise as we're in the market, listening, practicing our listening skills. I think I have tremendous communication skills. I'm a good listener, like I said. I'm also a team player, and collaborative, we're collaboratively. I'm a problem solver, and these are all important qualities, I think, on the Board of Education.
Thank you, Paulette. Tracy?
The role of the school board is advisory, so I would be one of five voices, listening to the community, listening to the teachers, parents, administration, everybody who is a stakeholder, as Paulette said, and making the smartest decision to move our district forward. With that, I'm empathetic, I'm a fair decision-maker, I'm big on research, I want to hear why something should be. I'm a great collaborator, I would bring that to the board. Being the PTA president last year, I had to work with all kinds of people, up and down the ladder, all realms of the community as well, and I've really learned how to bring people together and make the best decisions that we can to move forward. So, I would bring that to the board.
Thank you, Tracy. Emily?
Well, I think a little known, unknown fact is, the school board has one employee, and I won't make eye contact, she happens to be in the room, but I think that is one of the most important things the school board can do, is have the right people in the right seat. I think we are very blessed right now. We have the right person in the right seat, but there's always seats that need to be filled. And so, overseeing that, making sure those conversations are being had, is very important. You know, the school board sets policy, makes sure policy is followed, gives a direction. If a boat doesn't have a direction to go, it doesn't get anywhere. So, make conversations happen. I say all people all the time, they like to stop me in the grocery store, my kids don't like to shop with me. But I tell my kids, that's how you find out what's really going on. And then, to follow up and make sure, I'm not going to solve the problem, but I can put those people in the right con, in the, within the right path to get the answer ahead. I think sometimes it is misunderstood, the roles of a board. We are not here to teach. We aren't here to look at test scores on a classroom level, but to really see the whole boat and make sure the direction is going the right way.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're back to Paulette. She's ready.
All ready.
Okay, here we go. Please explain fiscal solvency as it relates to the school district budget.
Fiscal solvency. That means we have enough money. We're not broke. How, explain fiscal solvency. Well, our district is in good shape financially. We have a budget that guides us. We get money from Ed Foundation that rounds out the money we get from the state, and from the government, and from the county. You have to, this, you have to be aware of this, and you need to stay on top of it at all times. And I think that is an important function of the board, is to, we understand that budget, and we're going over it every year, I know. It goes over every year. And we are solvent now. There have been times when we weren't as solvent. I don't know.
Very good. Thank you, Paulette. Tracy?
Yeah, so fiscal solvency, I have been in various different committee roles in my time here in the district, and from, from school site council, to PTA president, to various parent involvement on technology committee, other things like that. I've seen different parts of the budget from different perspectives. And, oh my goodness, we have been so lucky to have Susan Nesevis being our CBO for all these years. Even sitting with her, asking simple questions, I get very complicated answers. I'm like, oh my goodness, we are so indebted to you for your talent here. But it is a complicated picture to keep an eye on and to keep track of, but it's something that is always being adjusted. I mean, the fact that you have to look at the ADA, and based on attendance, is what your money is. How do you know how many students are going to show up, how many days of the year? I mean, it's amazing to have to constantly adjust what you're doing to work within the fiscal confines of your budget. So, it's definitely something that is constantly monitored here in the district. I think we've been very thoughtful with what we do, and we'll continue to do so.
Very good. Emily?
All right. I told you about one of our companies. We've been very blessed. We actually have three more. My husband and I run four businesses here in El Segundo. I am no stranger to hard decisions. Unfortunately, a lot of times, a budget can run some decisions. We, as a board, have budget study sessions, which everyone is invited to attend, and that will be coming up. We sit down, we look line by line, we make those hard decisions. And I'll tell you, one of the hardest decisions is when it comes to salaries, and an ask for an increase, and you are crunching the numbers. The board literally goes line by line. So, you know, as far as fiscal solvency, I think this district has a legacy of being prudent, being fiscally responsible, and that is very important to me. I would love to give huge raises. I would love to, because what those teachers do is invaluable. But then, it comes down to a fiscally responsible solvent budget. You know, people don't understand, it goes to Sacramento, and it trickles back down. So, that, those are hard things the board definitely has to handle.
Thank you, Emily. Amy?
Would you mind repeating the question, please?
Sure. Please explain fiscal solvency as it relates to the school district budget.
Okay. My take on that is, as Emily was saying, the board needs to go through the budget line by line, and make those hard decisions. And you need to be held responsible to that. You need to be transparent in the decisions that you're making, and you need to prioritize things, sometimes, not always in a way that makes everyone happy. Look, you're not always going to be able to make everyone happy, but you need to make the most prudent financial decisions that you can for your community, for your district, so that you move forward rather than staying stagnant.
Thank you, Amy. And our next question is... Okay, we're going to start with Tracy. How much money did the Imperial School Site bring in for the school district? And how will this money be used?
Wow, it's like a math question. The Imperial Site, when it was attempted to be sold several times, or actually leased, really, the district, I know, did not want to let go of it, because it was continuing flow of income as a leased site. But when finally, that was not panning out the way they had hoped, and they said, let's sell it, the thought that they would bring in $16 million was what they were told. Luckily, there was a bidding war, and the school was able to bring in $22.625, I believe. And 16, the original hope, is locked in a legacy fund now, so that we have a constant flow of money coming out of that for ongoing repairs and facilities needs. But that, that $6.625 million bonus, we would say, it's not really a bonus, but the exemplary sale income has been put to good use already. And that's what we've been seeing with the buildings at Center Street, and some of the fencing projects and things that are happening now are coming out of that as well. We're happy to see that we have that extra income, but it's certainly not enough to cover all the needs of our district right now.
Thank you, Tracy. Emily?
A lot has been happening. I don't know if people are aware, we put, redid the TLC at Center Street School with that money. We've put in classrooms at middle school with that money. We redid a stairwell already at the Richmond Street School with that. The fencing that you see is Imperial money. The TLC at the back of Richmond, that everyone keeps telling me, where'd it go? You know, that building had not been inhabited for over a year because of problems with the building. And those kids have been displaced all over, and it's been rough. And so, we are moving forward with Imperial money. It is very important to me, and it was to our board, to have that legacy fund. We are going to the community right now, asking for more facility and more needs, and to have that interest off of that legacy fund, to upkeep those buildings that you're hopefully entrusting us with, is very important. It does not happen from the state. I don't know how to explain to people that, I know we pay a lot of taxes, but it all goes... all goes up, and we get a very small portion, because we are not told we don't need it, but we do. And so, that is where the Imperial money went.
Thank you, Emily. Amy?
I don't think I have to answer the question, because I think Tracy and Emily answered it, but I will say, I have, I was very impressed with all of the things that I've learned about the sale of the Imperial land, and how the money was put to use. I think it's a very, very smart investment, and I think it's been a very smart use of that excess funding.
Okay. Paulette.
We received over $22 million. 16, approximately $16 million was invested in bonds, and we receive $500,000 in interest every year from that money. That's the key part right there, because that's ongoing money, money we will see every year for facilities and technology infrastructure. Then six and a half million was put in, to the things they mentioned, plus modulars, buildings at Center Street and Richmond Street. So that, you know, we've taken care of some immediate needs. And then there's another million dollars that was put towards the Aquatic Center, necessary spending for equipment. And so, I would say that the money has been well spent, but we need to ensure that we have ongoing money, that 500,000 is spent prudently, year after year after year, on facilities and their needs.
Very good. Nobody answered that one, right? Give me the pen, I'm not going to lose my place. So I think that one started with Tracy, right?
Yep.
So we're going to start this with Emily. All right. How will you address drugs at our school?
You know, a few years ago, we introduced, wanted to introduce more drug searches, and I was surprised at the response of people. It is necessary. We are looking at putting vape detectors in bathrooms. There is a lot going on, and I am a firm believer in keeping people honest. It's, uh, it's sad, as a teen, a mom of three teenagers, I cannot stress what these kids have at their fingertips. And we need to stay up, we need to stay current, we need them to know that we care. To me, drug searches, smoke detector, or vape detectors, education, you know, we've been doing some parent nights, we've been doing education nights with parents and explaining, it is a package. It takes a village, and this is one of those things where if they know we're watching and paying attention, it keeps everybody honest.
Very good. Thank you, Emily. Amy?
I think this goes back to what I was saying in the beginning, it goes back to the parent involvement. And it starts not in the high school, it starts in kindergarten, it starts in pre-K, it starts in first grade. We need to not be afraid of having hard conversations with our young children. You need to educate them early, you need to be involved early, you need to keep them active, from what I can see, when you have students involved in the sports, in the Cub Scouts, in music, in art, when you have, again, that trifecta, the parent, the teacher, and the student working together, and you keep their self-esteem up, and you keep them involved, and you keep them connected, then the need to seek outside solace from drugs, alcohol, whatnot, will lessen and decrease.
Thank you, Amy. Paulette.
Okay. We know, after years and years of just say no, it doesn't work. Just say no does not really work. We need to give our kids, children, the skills to say no, or the tools to say no. The drug searches, the dog searches, the, and are, is a tool. I remember talking to a kid, and he was saying, I'm really happy that they have drug, dog searches on campus, because now I can, I have a reason, you know, you have the reason, you can say, I can't do this, because the dogs are going to search. There are other things that we can do too, that, not just the dog searches and that kind of, and the educational part, because we always need to be talking about, what are drugs, what is vaping, why are these things, answering questions and that kind of thing. But there are other programs that we have in town, that are aimed at keeping kids away from drugs. One of them is the Spark Program at the middle school. That was put in place because the kids were just hanging around at the liquor store and at the library, and causing all sorts of problems. So, a community, the road committee said, let's offer a middle school program in, with Parks and Rec, that supervises kids after school.
Okay, thank you, Paulette.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. No worries.
I was just getting warmed up.
Keep an eye on, I know. I, I know. Keep an eye on Ms. Donna down here. Tracy.
Yes. So, drugs in our schools, I remember being a kindergarten parent, or early at least in my education, and Officer Black coming to a PTA meeting and showing us all the amazing things that kids nowadays are exposed to and offered in the line of drugs, in our schools and, and the surrounding communities. It's astounding and very scary, as a parent, to see all that. I think with education, first of all, starting as young as you think they can handle, what your lungs look like, when you're vaping, it's not pretty, when you talk about, so education at all levels. Engagement, as Amy said, if there's better things to do in town than hang out and do drugs, well, you should be doing that. So, offering opportunities to our students to spend their energy positively, sports, arts, and all kinds of other opportunities are better than drugs. And enforcement is important as well. So, bringing in the searches, having the vaping monitors. We just now, recently in our city, implemented the social host ordinance, which will help with more reasoning why these drugs shouldn't be readily accessible to our kids. So, all of that. Education, engagement, enforcement will help, I believe, with our drug problems, and parent involvement is key.
Okay, thank you, Amy. Tracy. Okay. All right, we're going to start this with Amy. Amy, middle school backpacks weigh over 20 pounds. The recommended weight is 10% of body weight. Why can't we have lockers?
Well, I don't know. I don't know why we don't have lockers here. I wasn't aware that we didn't have lockers here, so that's a good question. But, what I can offer as a solution is, perhaps, there are textbooks that stay at home, and then there are materials that can be used in the classroom on iPads, or on smart boards, so it's not as necessary to shuttle them back and forth. That's just an idea. Sorry if that's an inadequate response. I'm actually quite shocked that there are no lockers.
Thank you, Amy. Paulette.
I remember that argument a gazillion years ago. I don't remember why we did, we don't have them, but aren't, I, in the facilities master plan, with the new gym, we're going to have, well, locker rooms for the...
No.
No, no lockers. I would, well, I think we're moving more towards technology, and books are about ready to become extinct. And I know that they have iPads now, and it's, so that's one way of reducing the load. They also put rollers on the backpacks, is that no longer, that's not cool. Didn't think so. But, I would give anything to remember why that we didn't do that. I'll ask Bill after this meeting.
Okay, thank you, Paulette. Tracy.
So, yes, I think the lockers at middle school disappeared after the Raiders had the use of the middle school, what is now the middle school facility, and it was being reconstructed to match a school need again. I believe some of the locker elimination was to avoid places where drugs could be stored. But again, I wasn't at middle school yet either at that point, so don't have that history. But I will tell you that, yes, students' learning is moving more towards iPads, or we do have some textbooks that can stay home, so that is, that is a smart use of not carrying textbooks around. The eBooks on iPads, obviously consolidates into one small unit, which is better. I know that every year, new parents in the middle school freak out about this, and I was one of those once too, but the teachers will listen to, okay, maybe you don't each need your own spiral for all eight courses. And they will let you consolidate, and they will work with you on this. Some teachers I know this year allow you to keep your notebook, or your manu, whatever pad you need for a class, the graphing pad, or the regular pad, in the classroom. So, those can stay there as well, to help alleviate what you carry.
Thank you, Tracy. Emily.
Hello, it goes back to fiscal solvency, first of all, it did, they did leave with the Raiders. That's, you know, when that big shift happened, and then when it came back to us, there wasn't the money to put that back. And I'm sure that was a hard decision back then, and, but now, honestly, there is, I heard when Paulette said, away with books, it's iBooks. We are not getting, getting rid of books. And, you know, I remind everyone that we are teaching a different generation. I understand if we were teaching you, that seems scary, but to them, this is who they are. It's still, they turn the pages on the book, and it's just different. I know that sounds scary, looks scary. As a mom of teenagers at the high school, my daughter uses her locker as, she calls it her fridge, and snacks. It is getting better. We are working with our teachers, and as Tracy said, combining things, getting that backpack down. I think in the next little bit, we really will see a difference in what they are carrying.
Very good. All right. Everybody got that one? All righty. I think, oh. And I think, my memory of the lockers is that there were so many students in the hallways during passing period, that once you added lockers on each side, there was no room. Am I right about that? Seems to be what I remember. And kids tend to Terry in their lockers, so they tend to become late at class. I think they're, so that was a couple of reasons, just my memory.
Human experiences.
And they're done that. Okay. So, all right, the next one is for Paulette, right? What is your feeling on raising the GPA for sports participation from 2.0 to at least 2.5 or higher?
Oh my. That's interesting, because I was around when they raised it to 2.0, and that caused a scream that went, heard around the world. I don't know, but, you know, I would think that most, hmm, I'd have to look at that. It doesn't seem unreasonable, 2.5 nowadays, does not seem unreasonable. But I'm always, because of my special ed background, I know my kids had a little difficulty getting up to that B category. And I, I think there would have to be, I'd have to look at it. I'd have to ask people what they thought, and study that one. I mean, standards are not a bad thing. We need to have standards, we need to have expectations, and the higher the expectations, a lot of times, the better the kids perform. We sat, we found that out when we did raise it to C. But I'd have to look.
Thank you, Paulette. Tracy.
We do not have state standards for athleticism, so I would say that we are here to teach academic things, and if we can't get our kids to 2.5, we need to support them however we can in doing that. Sports, to me, is a wonderful route for very few kids to pursue as a life goal, as a profession. You just look at the numbers. I, I have a high schooler who thinks he might be a baseball player someday, but when you look at the numbers of what the reality is, you may want to do that, but you should also have a backup plan for a different job, and most of the jobs will require education or a skill, which thankfully, we have the option here with SoCal Rock, to give skills as well. But anyway, the 2.5 should not be a hard goal to reach, and if it is for our students, the priority should be helping them get to that, more than letting them play sports.
Thank you, Tracy. Emily.
That's the first time I've ever heard that. Whoever's question that was, kudos to you. My first thought, though, is, I don't think it should be singled out to sports. If we're going to do something like that, it should be band, choir, drama. I don't think isolating the sports into that category is fair. I think you need to be a little bit careful, in that, for some kids, school is hard, and sports gets them here, and if we make sports, or choir, or band unattainable, I would be afraid of where else that might slide. But, I mean, again, if, if that would be something, I think that the high school teachers would need to, you know, wrap their head around, discuss, and bring to the board, that would never be something I would want the board rolling down to the, to the site.
Thank you, Emily. Amy.
Great answer, Emily. I think, what a gift we could give our children. 2.5 should be where they're at, especially if they want to have the honor of participating in sports, and choir, and any other extracurricular. And it's our responsibility as teachers, as staff, as administrators, as parents, to help them get there and achieve both. If they're achieving academically high standards, and then they are also achieving their extracurricular challenges, what a great gift we could give to our kids.
Our next question, we'll start with Emily. Who is your role model and why?
I remember that question being posed at a city council meeting. I, I'm not going to... He's in the room. My husband really is my role model. You know, I grew up, my parents were not involved. They didn't go to meetings, they didn't go to anything. I got asked all the time, is, do you have a dad? And when I got married, I married into this family, this big family, and I thought, wow, check this out, this is how families work. And to see him work, you know, he works six days a week, and then it's church callings on Sunday. And when I look at my kids and how they have turned out, it's because they have a good And that's why, a village is important, that's why we moved to a two-bedroom, one-bath house, to be here in El Segundo, to have role models. And, you know, sometimes people have these lofty role models, and it's the people in your day-to-day life that are role models, and that make a difference.
Thank you, Emily.
Oh, no, 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 no.
It's okay to be a little emotional, because you have a special guy.
It happens every once in a while.
That's right. You're human. And, okay, Amy, who is your role model and why?
You're curious. I'm not going to cry. I'm not going to do it. You know, I went through a very long period of time when I was a teenager, where I was, I hate you, Mom, I hate you. I used to blare, "I want to get out of this place, if it's the last thing I ever do." And she passed away in February. And my mother is my role model. Her, um, her motto was aspire higher. And I wish that for each and every one of us. And she forced me to be the best that I could be, and I didn't always like it, and I didn't always love it. And sometimes she would look at me and say, I don't like you. I love you, but I don't like you. And I used to be so offended by that, but it forced me to be better, and it forced me to aspire higher. And I thank her for everything that I am, and for everything that I can still be.
Thank you, Amy. Very good. That's a good question. Okay, Paulette.
That's a tough one. That's a hard act to follow. I came up with Wonder Woman. I'm taking it serious, too, because I can't, you know, you're kind of out there all by yourself, and that's what you feel like. Wonder Woman, I can do this, you know? Work hard, do your best, budget your money, save. These are all values that I've grown up with, and I guess I'm my own role model. Oh, man. I'm not...
There you go.
There you go.
Okay, Tracy?
I, I look to both my mom and my mother-in-law as role models because they were both very different in their, their approach to mothering and enjoying life. My mom was a stay-at-home mom for most of the time that I was growing up, and I appreciate that she put herself there and was available to us all the time. Maybe when I was a teenager, I didn't appreciate it as much, but I will say, I'm grateful that she was there to, to have a family meal and, and that's something, even in our crazy schedule, I love it when I can put together a family meal and we can all sit down together and converse and, and just connect with one another. So that for my mom, for sure. But then on the other hand, my mother-in-law was a working mom for the youth of my husband and his sister, but she was very connected. To this day, she's extremely connected with us and with our kids. She's a really engaged grandparent. Both of our moms are, so I appreciate that. But with, with my mother-in-law, she is out there seeing the world, trying new things, continuing to explore, and that's something I love to do as well. I really appreciate the sense of adventure that she brings. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Okay, ladies, this is going to be our last question, so after that, we will have our two-minute summation, summarization, and that one, we're going to start with Amy. So, put that, what, okay. And Amy, you get this one, too. What is an interesting fact about you that few people know?
Hmm, um, that few people know. I worked on Capitol Hill for a little while. I was an intern on Capitol Hill for Representative Barbara Cannelli. I was a poly-sci major and a performing arts major. I did a double major. And when I spent my time in DC and I was trying to decide whether or not I should stay in DC, I decided DC and Hollywood were essentially the same place, but there were a lot more perks with Hollywood. So I followed Hollywood. So that's a little-known fact.
There you go. Okay. Thank you. Paulette?
I'm all about the schools. I'm passionate about education. Little-known fact, I have a school bus driver's license. I even drove the Dial-A-Ride bus for field trips here in El Segundo. Remember that? That was kind of fun. When I turned 21, I worked for the YMCA in Westchester and they, I was a day camp counselor. And they found out I was 21, "Oh, we're going to teach you how to drive a bus and we're taking you down to get your license." And I had that license until just a few years ago when I decided, I'm not going to drive any more buses. But I drove a bus, oh, yeah, and another qualification for that was I had to know how to drive a stick shift.
And she drives a pretty zippy little sports car, too.
Yeah, well, I was going to mention that, but I'll wait, I'll save that.
Two minutes, you get the two minutes. All right. Tracy?
Well, let's see. Little-known fact would be that I am the voice of a character in a Disney animated movie. Has nothing to do with helping the schools, but that is a little-known fact. Yeah, in, in earlier phases of my career, I worked for Walt Disney Feature Animation as a production manager, and some of us that were not afraid to get in front of the mic and be silly had the opportunity to do that. And sometimes the directors like your voice well enough that it sticks in the final film. So if you want to find out what that is, we could talk later.
Very good. Thank you, Tracy.
Go on IMDb, you'll find it.
All right. Emily?
I think few people might know this already, but my favorite thing in the whole wide world is riding my dirt bike. I just love it. You know, we do these rides, it's called dual-sport rides, where it's, it looks like a dirt bike, but it has a plate on it. So we've ridden from Palmdale all the way to Vegas on dirt. And you'd be amazed at what is back, little lakes and you can find waterfalls and all kinds of things when you get off that beaten path. Camping, getting away, it's what keeps me sane. You know, running the businesses, being a mom, being school board, people ask me all the time, what, what do you, what do you do? I get out and I go camping and I ride my motorcycle and it is the greatest thing in the world. So if you see an orange bike riding around sometimes, that might be me.
Very good. All righty. And, did everybody answer? Yep, good. All righty, we're ready for our two-minute summary. And we'll start with you, Ms. Amy. Thank you.
Aspire higher. You know, my mom said it, aspire higher. I feel honored and I feel privileged to have moved into this community. In the short time that we've been here, we have managed to jump in with two feet. You know, I'm signed up with the PTA, my husband is coaching soccer, I'm trying to be as involved as possible. I signed up to be a room mom. I am in a position right now where I am able to be a stay-at-home mom for the next year or so, and I want to give as much to this community as I can in that time. I look forward to meeting the community, I look forward to serving the community, and I have always wanted to serve my children, serve my community, and give back. And again, I have been here such a short time, but in the short time that we've been here, it has given us so much. My children are allowed to be children instead of being these urban kids that have to be so tough. They have become these bright-eyed, curious children. Our family has been thriving and I want to share that with everyone.
Good. Thank you. And Emily?
Let's go back this way.
Okay.
Emily? You know, time flies. I can't believe this is my fifth year on the board. I remember sitting up here five years ago, hearing these questions, going, I have no idea. And after five years and seeing what's going on and being in meetings after meetings after meetings, you really learn a lot. And I, I really, I know the time it takes to be on the board and it's a lot. I think people don't, if you see another board member, thank them. If you see your city council members, thank them. Whether you disagree or, or agree on some things, just thank them for their time. Thank their families. But I'm not afraid of that. My family has been conditioned, so they, they know, but the, the time is well-spent. It's wonderful when you know why a decision is made instead of being on social media or venting in various ways because you don't understand. It's nice to know why. Now, I might not agree and I wish there was a better way, but it's nice to know why a decision was made. El Segundo's special. I, I knew that from day one. It means a lot to me. Having four generations of El Segundoans here in our family, I'm vested. I, I want to see better. Do we have great? We do. Is there always room for better? There is. And I hope to be on the board to see it get even better. I, I know it can and I know we will. We have great teachers, we have great families, and it will get better. I thank the Women's Club for putting this on. I know you all have busy nights and things you could be doing and sleeping and all kinds of fun things, but thank you. I think it's invaluable to hear from us instead of just seeing a name on a paper or reading something. So I thank you for the time to do this. And I just, you know, I really want to remind the public, public education is down here. El Segundo is up here. Even though we're a public school, we are very lucky to have what we have, and I hope we continue to support that.
Thank you, Emily. Tracy?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thrilled that my life is here in El Segundo. I'm glad that, that it took us on a path to put us here and that we've enjoyed our time in this town. Well, I'll do everything I can to keep this community the wonderful place that I know it to be, and the schools are a key part of that. I'm glad you all are here, as Emily said, to, to take the time to get to know us. And those of you watching from home later, thank you for doing that as well. I hope you've all gotten a good sense of my deep dedication to our schools and know that I will use all of that I've learned to make really balanced and informed decisions using my current perspective. Being as involved as I am in the schools right now, I think gives me an incredible perspective on how things work and how they can be better. I'll do everything I can to maintain the high standards that we have because we have worked so hard to get to that in El Segundo, and if there's any way to raise them, I certainly will be in support of that as well. If you guys have any other questions, anyone watching from home or here tonight, I do have a website you can check out, tracyforschoolboard.info. You can send me email on there as well. I welcome any conversation you want to have because I want you to know who I am and know who you'd be getting on school board if we don't already know one another. Better yet, if you are available Thursday morning, come to the Blue Butterfly. I'm going to hang out there at nine o'clock as, as I love to have a reason to do. So if you can, come by, have some coffee, let's chat. I would love to get to know you better and have you understand where I'm coming from. Or find me on the soccer field this weekend or at Ralph's or wherever. Amy and I have already run into each other at Ralph's. So our hometown is great for that. I love that about our hometown, that we can cross paths and have a wonderful conversation with so many different people. It's great and I will continue to enjoy that. Thank you, Women's Club for hosting, for all your hard work putting this together, and thanks for all of you coming tonight and your consideration for casting a vote my way.
Very good. All righty, Paulette?
All right. I have been endorsed by the El Segundo Teachers Association. I am very proud of that. I feel I am well-qualified to serve on your Board of Education. My years of teaching experience and my educational background have afforded me a deep understanding of what it takes to make our schools exceptional and able to meet the needs of all of our students. I would focus on the whole child, that includes academics and social, emotional well-being. We need to prepare our children for today's world and beyond. By giving them the real-world opportunities and hands-on experiences, we provide them the tools for a successful future. Safety is also a big concern of mine. I support strengthening the safety plans to include more emphasis on prevention of bullying and increase campus security at all sites. When our children come to school, they should be safe from bullying and outside threats. Children learn better when they feel safe. Fiscal responsibility is one more very important component that I would focus upon. It's important to manage our resources, whoops, I'm losing, by planning for the future. A 10-year plan is good, but a 20-year plan is better. I fully support setting aside money for long-range facility needs. While I support the bond, I will work diligently to avoid the need for any future bonds. Again, thank you very much for this opportunity to share my views with you. I'm excited about the future and the opportunity to play a role in shaping it. If you would like more information, I have my handouts are in the back room with everybody else's, and I have a website also, paulettecoddell.com. I encourage you to go, oh, here, what's this? Thank you again for this opportunity.
I want to thank each and every one of our candidates. You did a stellar job. Thank you. I want to thank a couple of people in the room. Carol Cervantes for organizing this whole thing and giving us our marching orders. Thank you, Carol. I actually think Women's Club's getting pretty good at this, so we could probably do it again. And I want to thank Donna May for doing our timing. Thank you, Donna May Ella. And for our question ladies here, Linda Johnson and Doreen Morgan. We do have a couple, we have candidates' tables in the boardroom there, so when we are released, here in a couple of seconds, please go in there, there's some refreshments, get a chance to casually chat with our ladies, they can go, ah, and then they can answer more questions. I think we're just going to have one of the most beautiful school boards, no matter who wins, they're just lovely ladies, as are the ladies that are already there. So I also want to announce that the Women's Club is having a little fundraiser this Friday at a store that is near and dear to my heart, J.Jill in Manhattan Village. They are charging $25 for a ticket, and that $25 is going for high school scholarships. We will meet from 8:30 to 10:00 before the mall opens for a little breakfast shop. We will have stylists on hand to help dress you up, so ladies, if you want to improve your wardrobe for the dais. We will, the store is providing breakfast, some lovely pastries from Porto's and some other goodies, and then we'll have time to shop. We also have the opportunity to bring in any gently-worn items. Does not have to be the J.Jill brand. And for every item you bring in, you'll get 30% off a full-priced item, and we have a ray of sale items as well. So it's going to be a fun morning, we've done it before, so grab your friends, come on down, you can buy tickets at the door. We also have tickets available in the boardroom there. So at this point, I want to thank the El Segundo Cable for filming this and for you folks around the tube at home, you'll get a chance to see this. And it loops, so they'll get to see it over and over. And, so, yes. And again, I think we need to give our candidates, what? Oh, yes. And notice the, we have a group of high school, the band members that practice here, no? The community string?
South Bay Swing Band.
South Bay Swing Band. And they have a couple of days that they're going to come here and perform, and it's a free concert. So, it's not free, it's $10. I need to read my emails. I'm sorry. There are some little signs in the room there that you'll notice. And at this point in time, I think we're going to adjourn the meeting, and let's give our candidates a round of applause one more time. Thank you.